It's seven o'clock, Wednesday evening, the fourteenth of November. This is a planning board meeting for public input on the changes, amendments to the master plan. I'm Bob Bartlett, chairman of the planning board. Greg Winters, Corey Barville, Paul Dostal is our clerk. And we've been working over the last few months with Larry Smith from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. We've asked to help us with this update. The update was funded on a grant from the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. It's called the District Local Technical Assistance Program. And that's where the money came from. And we, there's a deadline at the end of the year, this project has to be completed. So we're, that's why we're here, to get some public input on the proposed changes. Again, the master plan is, was developed in 2001, or that's when it was last updated. It's time to start working on it. When I was notified that this grant money was available last spring, I contacted Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for some help, because we don't have the staff, for some help in, in working with the planning board to develop some upgrades. So, Mr. Larry Smith from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission will, will run the, the meeting.
My name's Larry Smith. I work at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. As the chairman told you, we've been working with the planning board over the past number of months to update the land use section of the master plan. That's really what we're looking at. And what I suggest is, if you want one of the handouts, you need to sit at one of the So, find a table, because they're going to be breaking down to the tables shortly anyway. And please leave one chair at each table for one member of the planning board. Very good. Thank you. We're going to start with just looking at some of the updates of the statistical data for the town of Hatfield. And there's a, there is a handout that has that. I'm just going to just quickly run down this, so you can just get a sense of what's been happening over the last ten years. The first table is a number of single-family residential, residential parcels in Hatfield. And as you can see, a lot of these, statistically, we've compared you with Hadley, Northampton, and Southwick as well. We stuck with those towns because back when the original master plan was done, those were the towns that were used as comparables, and we wanted to be, remain consistent in that. So as you notice, the, the annual rate of increase in the number of single-family parcels is 6.15 percent in Hatfield. As you can tell, that's quite low compared to the 16 percent in Hadley, the 20 percent in Northampton, and the 35 percent in Southwick. So in terms of new parcels being created, Hatfield's on the slow end of it. In terms of median sale of residential property...
Excuse me, but parcels don't necessarily correlate to 200-foot frontage?
Building lots.
They do, they do correlate to the zoned, required zoning requirements.
Not necessarily. But these are just, you know, lots that were created through A&R process or...
Doesn't mean houses that were actually built.
No, this is just the parcel. These are parcels that were created. We'll get to the number of houses later on. Okay? Median sale of residential property, you can see Hatfield, the annual rate was about 14,500. Hadley was 15,300. Northampton's 15,100. Southwick is 12,700. So you're still in the same range with the communities around us and of about the same size. Average single-family tax bill, residential tax bill, I'm going to go to the percent of increase over the last 20 years, has gone up 56 percent in Hatfield, 61 percent in Hadley, 61 percent in Northampton, 60 percent in Southwick. So you can see that Hatfield is on the, the low end of that spectrum also. Residential property tax rate, let's see, we'll go again with the percent of increase. Hatfield's over the last 20 years, the change was 13.8. Hadley's was 22.9. Northampton's was 13.505, and Southwick's was 9.4. So again, you're, you're pretty steady with the way the increases went in the other communities as well. In terms of population change, in terms of total population, you can see that between 1990 and 2000, the percent of change was 2.2 percent. Between 2000 and 210, the point, the percent of change was .7 percent. So the rate of change has dropped over the last 10 years. And you can see compared to some of the other communities, Northham, or Hadley's percent of change was 9 percent. Northampton's was minus 1. You had a 7, plus 7 percent in Southwick. You had a plus 3.8 percent in the entire Hampshire County. So your total population change has been quite low. On the other hand, when you look at the median age, between 2000 and 2010, your median age has increased by 11.8 percent, as opposed to 10.9 percent in Northampton. It actually drive, dropped a half a percent in Southwick, was 11 percent, I'm sorry, half a percent in Northampton. Northampton got younger. Southwick is 11. Hampshire County as a whole was 5.2. So you have a population that is aging quicker than the other communities. I think a lot of that is probably because a lot of people are staying here. And they're just growing old here in Hatfield.
There are a lot of people, the other families are younger.
That's correct. To balance it out.
And Northampton too.
That's, that has a lot to do with the age, doesn't it? Yes, students is, is a big part of it. And one of the things that we are, kind of perplexed us a little bit while we were, we've talked about this, this in the office, is how insulated Hatfield has been from the growth in Northampton. You haven't had the impact that the communities like Hadley or, or East Hampton in particular have had.
We're a bedroom community, that's why.
You're a, but you're, you're not a student bedroom community.
We're not a student.
Right. Okay. In terms of housing prices, we'll go to the median sales price of the last, from 2008, where do we got, 2008 to 2010, the median sales price has dropped, dropped 17 percent in Hatfield, it's dropped 6 percent in Hadley, dropped 5 percent in Southwick, I'm sorry, Northampton went up 5 percent in Southwick, and across Hampshire County has dropped about 4 percent. Household income, median household income, Hatfield's is about $67,800. Hadley's is $68,000. Northampton's is 53. Southwick's is 64. Across the board in Hampshire County, the median household income is about $57,000. So you're doing pretty good. Hatfield residents' median income is one of the higher ones. Number of single-family home sales, from 2010 to 2011, there was a decrease in the number of sales of six. It went from 25 down to 19 for a drop of 24 percent. However, between 2011 and 2012, it went from 19 back up to 25. So you bumped up to where you were in two years ago for a plus 24. Next sheet talks about building permits. And the Hatfield column is the shaded column in the left. And you can show you had a couple of bumps in 2001 and 2006. I think one of those was probably the, was it the housing project? Was it seniors? Was it a senior project? Okay.
That's in the works now.
Okay. Do you know what that was, why it had the jump in 2001? Or what, or what happened in 2006? Okay. But as you can tell, you're getting 1, 4, 3, building permits a year being issued, which is a lot less than a lot of the other communities. A lot of that, I think, probably has to do with the recession and the lack of ability to get financing. On the other hand, it's, I think, also reflective of Hadley's, again, you're just insulated. It's like there's a fog at the town line and...
We keep them out.
Pardon?
We keep them out.
Well, it's like Xanadu or something. The next sheet is a little bit deceiving, and I'll explain why in a minute. And what this does is it compares the various land uses in Hatfield. And it goes from cropland, pastureland, mining, openland, recreation, high-density residential, low-density residential, all the way down the list. And it was, if you take a look at the percentage of change in acres of, of that, it's pretty consistent between 71, 85, 97, and 2005. I'm sorry, 97. But in 2005, when you look at the percent of change in the shaded column on the right, you see some really crazy numbers. And I had to really take a strong look at that. And the reason we, that, that is different now is because these are based upon aerial reconnaissance and aerial photos done by the state. And they take aerial photos, and then they, they analyze them based upon the land use. And in 2005, or shortly before, when they took those photos, they really upped the quality of the equipment that they were using, and they changed their formatting a little bit, but the technology got a lot, a lot better. And so it's a lot more accurate. But they also did things a little bit differently, like they changed some categorations, categorizing. So you really can't change, compare the comparisons between the two, the prior years, just because the way they collected and analyzed the data is different. So when they do the next flyover in five years or so, there'll be a better comparison rate.
Yeah, one of the, open space went down 53 percent. I mean, your wetlands went up 96 percent.
Yeah. And your wetlands went up 176 percent. Yep.
I don't know what 30 percent in actual recreation is.
Yeah. Again, I don't think you can put a lot of stock in these numbers in this particular year, just because of the data collection. It's, it's, you're comparing apples and oranges, unfortunately. We go to the next page. We talk about agricultural land change. This is cropland and forest acres. Between 97 and 2005, you lost about 600 acres of cropland, or about 17 percent. Compared to the other communities, acreage-wise, it was less, but in terms of a percentage of your total acre, it was one of, one of the higher ones. In terms of residential development and changes, change in residential development, let's see, between 97 and '05, or between 71 and 97, you gained 51 percent. But in 97 and '05, you lost about 5 percent. But if you look down the columns, everybody lost over, over that, that time period. In terms of the development of change for commercial properties, you've gained 35 percent since 1997. Hadley gained 21 percent, Southwick 48 percent, and Northampton lost 10 percent. In terms of industrial development change, you had an increase, a percentage of increase gain of 63 percent, whereas Hadley lost 13 percent, Southwick gained 63 percent, and Northampton lost 8 percent. We haven't received all the information yet we need from the assessors' office relative to the parcel acreage by land use, but so we'll be updating that. Yes?
Do you have any explanations as to what that means? Because there wasn't any park name and development or...
Well, again, that's, this is over 12 years. Is, is, and most of the other ones are like over five years, so there's, I think that's why the, that looks like such a large number.
Even over 12 years, that's a lot of land.
Yeah.
Didn't go that...
Have you had a lot of rezoning or, I'd have to ask the planning board.
Just looking for insight into that.
Yeah. Again, part of that also is, is again, it's based on the aerial photos. And they use the old techniques prior to that, and the '05 ones are with the new ones. So that might be, might relate to that also. I mean, it's terrific, they upgraded everything, but they really messed up your comparables by changing the, the data and the ways it's collected.
I guess, I was going to say, and the thing to do is that, you have the big goals of the master plan, which is to preserve agricultural land that was detailed in.
Correct. I mean, yeah, that's true. But if you take a look, there hasn't been that much growth in development over that time period. It's kind of hard to, I mean, have, have you noticed a, a real loss or conversion of farmland to development, to industry or to subdivisions? I mean, in terms of the number of building permits that have been issued, there haven't been a lot.
I think it may have to do with the aerial photography.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think it's more of the way the data was collected and the way it's being compared.
To clear a picture of what the, the land use is, if it was fuzzy before, maybe somebody called it cropland and it really wasn't, it was, it was brushy pastureland or something like that, that appeared to be, in, in the poor photographs, that appeared to be cropland.
Yeah.
And then when they got the, the newer sophisticated equipment, they could see, see clearer. That, that's the only thing I could think of.
Yeah, and that's exactly what, what it is.
They reclassified it, and, and therefore there was a loss.
Wetlands.
I mean, the wetlands looked like they...
But if you also notice, there used to be forest wetlands, and I think, let's see, which way did it go?
Went up.
Yeah.
Went up from zero to 910 acres.
But they used to, but, but the problem there is, they used to have a wetland for, or they have a wetland forest category, or used to. And so they sort of cut that, either they added it to it or they took it away for it. So that's another, another skewed number.
That may be where some of the cropland went as well into wetlands.
Yeah.
Again, with the more sophisticated photography, it was clearer what the actual use was.
Talk about industrial development. In terms of current business and industrial acreage, 2010, you had 265 acres, of which 96 were developed. Industrial, you had 989 acres, of which 177 were developed. For a total of combined commercial-industrial, you have 1,255 acres, of which 273 is developed. Down below, it, this is just the breakdown of the zoning district in terms of how many acres you have to the percent of total. The other interesting thing with the new aerial photos is, I think you lost like three acres or something. So, I'm not sure if Northampton grabbed it, or if it got washed into the Connecticut River, but there was a change of about three acres. And that pretty much just runs down the statistical background. The other thing I want to run through is on the other, is on the other sheet. And this is going to be part of what you're going to be using in the next part of this exercise. So let me just run down this. These, this is taken from the Hatfield mass, 2001 master plan. And this was what was identified under the land use section as being the land use issues. Number one was that the rural character is threatened, the loss of farmland and large lot development. Number two was increased negative impacts of development, traffic, local capacity, loss of open space. Number three was scattered development patterns in town, sprawlous. Number four were antiquated land use regulations. That would primarily be your subdivision regulations, your zoning bylaws, and if you have a local wetlands ordinance. Number five was a lack of coordinated infrastructure planning. Number six was that much of the industrial commercial zones have environmental constraints. You'll notice on the map, the zoning map you have here, there are a couple of overlay districts that are not shown. In particular, there's a floodplain district, I think there's an aquifer district, I think you can have a, I'm not sure the exact name, but like a river district that, that runs and encompasses a number of wetlands. Number seven was that there were limited housing opportunities. Now, when you get to the next section, in the land use section, there were 33 recommendations that the town, for the town to consider doing. And again, I'd like to point out, in, in the master plan, it doesn't really give you the specific regulations, but it identifies what they're suggesting you might want to consider. And then from that point, the, the planning board of the town would develop those specific bylaws and run them through town meeting and see if they would get, could get passed or not. What the, what the master plan does in large part is it develops a lot of generalized goals and objectives to kind of guide the decisions of the planning board and the selectmen of the zoning board of appeals and the conservation commission over the ensuing decade, so that everybody has a uniform, is working from a uniform template, so that they're all making consi...
Making decisions consistently, and everybody's...
Using the same yardstick. And I'm not going to go over this list. Well, what I will do is I will just run down the list and just briefly identify the recommendations that in fact were completed. One was adopting site plan approval for all commercial and industrial uses. One was to adopt the CPA, Community Preservation Act. One was to review and amend zoning to manage development, adopt a table of uses, and update the dimensional and density regulations. One was a right farmland cluster zoning that I believe went to town meeting and didn't pass.
Excuse me, if I could explain the question mark after 3B.
3B.
Under the completed question mark.
I don't have a question mark.
Sorry, I read the... Under the major development review.
No, no, it's, I, on the copy I had.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
I read your reader.
Got you. Yeah, there you go.
Then resolve.
Adopt a transfer development right by law, elderly handicapped migrant housing, adopt commercial industrial design guidelines, adopt commercial industrial performance standards, create new light industrial technology park district, establish agricultural advisory committee, implement a stormwater management bylaw. But there are a lot that did not get checked off. So one of the things, and this is where we're going to be heading next with this exercise, is everybody's going to be going to a table, and on the table you have a zoning map. And the zoning map shows you various zoning districts. And what we want to discuss for the next, oh, let's see, I'd say 45 minutes or so, is you want to talk amongst yourselves, and you, what you want to do is, is ask, address two questions. One is, what do you see as the issues? What are the issues, the land use issue in Hatfield? And I know there are some issues that are going to pop out immediately. I, you know, driving into town, you can't help but miss all the solar lines that are up. And I know that's a hot issue. And I also know there was some, some zoning proposals proposed along Route 5 and 10. And I think those are really important, and I think you really ought to touch on those, but don't dwell on them, because we want to really address all of the issues. And so once you identify an issue, let's try to identify some additional issues. And then the second part of the exercise is, relative to those issues, what do you think are some of the solutions? So you're identifying the issues, and you're going to try to identify or come up with some suggested solutions to that. And so you also might want to go back and take a look at the original issues that Hatfield was, had included in the 2001 master plan, see if there's still ongoing issues, see if some have been addressed, see if there are additional issues we have to add to that. And so what I'd like to do is, you all have a, a map in front of you, you all have some markers. I would like one person at each table to either volunteer or be voted as a scribe or a reporter, because after we're done with this exercise, what we're going to do is have each group come up here and put their plan up here, and feel free, you know, color that mat up. That's why you have those there. No one's taking them home, so you make them dirty and write on them. If there's an area that you see there's an issue, circle that area and write, 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 write on it what that issue is. You'll also have a strip on the right side of the map that's blank. Feel free to write additional issues there, write what your solutions are there. I have extra paper over there if you need it. And so when we're done with that exercise, what we'll then do is have each group come up one at a time, and whoever the scribe or reporter is, is tell us what you identified as issues and some suggested recommend, or solutions to those issues. And then we'll have, engage in some conversation and discussion on that. Yes?
Do you review the legend abbreviations?
Sure. Actually, probably a planning board member.
Well, it's, the zoning is color-coded.
I think he wants to know what the, what are the abbreviation scans for?
TCB and all that.
The AG.
Agriculture. Yeah. The, the AG is agriculture, which is green on the map.
You picking up, Bob? Do you have a mic?
Yes, I do.
Okay, you're good.
Again, the AG stands for agriculture zone, and, and the zone is indicated in green. The light yellow is outlying residential. The OR. The white is double R, which is rural residential. The, I'll call it tan, TC is town center. And then the, kind of a pinkish tan is town center business. And the red is business zone, or B. The purple is industrial. And the, the light blue is light industrial.
Well, what's going to be helpful is, at, once, once you finish here, one planning board member will be at each of your tables, so they can ask you and, you know, clarify some zoning map issues, or zoning...
Two of them there.
Questions you might have. Yes?
On the list, there's a couple of things that were accomplished, like number 25, I'm going to use this base plan.
Was that accomplished?
Schools facilities, I think we built a new school, so that was accomplished, I think.
Which, which school was that?
The Hatfield Elementary School.
Okay. What, what I would suggest is, that's why you have this, if you have blanks to fill in, check them off for us. Thank you. Okay. Why don't we break down to the tables and start hashing it out? Who would like to go first? Fair enough. How about you folks? And there is a microphone here, so if the scribe could speak into that, that would be terrific.
The microphone's not going to do anything.
No, we're just...
Yeah, exactly.
We define, let me see, the easiest way here. We defined a couple of areas here, three areas actually. One is the Route 5 quarter in here. Last couple of years, we tried rezoning the, this Route 5 quarter to bring the sewer line up, and, and that was defeated. But the real problem here is to get the sewer up in this area to eliminate the problems with the high water table and the, and the failing septic systems up in this area, okay? The reason that has to be done is because there's an aquifer that's underneath this Route 5 quarter. The aquifer goes from roughly to Sunoco Station on Route 5. It goes all the way up to the Whately line and further. We have two wells, one is the old master well up in North Hatfield, and the other one is the Vetsold well behind the old Ozley construction here. And that draws water from the aquifer underneath, and that's where we get a lot of our water from, and also on, on the reservoir side. So, the problem being is, there is no sewer there. Looking to get the sewer up there to eliminate the problem, protect the aquifer. The second area we recognized was up in North Hatfield, on North Hatfield Road. There's about 100 acres up on North Hatfield Road. There's light industrial across the road here. The redevelopment authority tried a couple of years ago to get this project going. It failed because there was no sewer, one of the reasons there was no sewer, and also we couldn't get access to Route 5. So what we, what we looked here is, we identified this as a prob, potential problem because it's residential, in a, in a, basically a, a commercial district or an industrial district. And the solution would be to rezone... And the solution would be to rezone to light industrial, same as on this side of the road here. The other one we recognized is the Bridge Street, the Chestnut Street project. That's where the solar farm was going here. And what we looked, we looked at the whole thing, identified it as a potential problem with the neighborhood. The panels, I'm not sure what the solar farm, how many panels were going in there, but with the neighbors and the stuff that's going on on Chestnut Street, everybody knows there. That could happen anywhere else in the town. So what we need to look at for a solution is to create some zoning, not bylaws, but conditions or bylaws that would protect the homeowners all the way around, protect it in other areas, and also setbacks and, uh, and anything else. I know there's a brook in here, so I'm not sure. I think they have to be roughly a hundred feet away from the brook, okay? In this area, and there's other areas that these little brooks run through too. So that would be another defined area. But, but that could conceivably happen anywhere throughout the whole town. So in order to help alleviate some of the problems that it could create, we're going to have to come up with a solution to protect the residents, so this doesn't happen. Oh, and also, we talked about the panels in general, okay? The solar panels in general. The solar panels have a twenty-year lifespan, okay? And after the twenty years, they need to come down. If, even on the residential houses, even on your own house, if you've got a hundred panels or fifty panels on your house, then there's got to be a bylaw to take the panels off of there. And in this case, if there's a solar farm that goes into town, those solar farms need to be able to, you need to put some kind of restriction to get the panels off the property, because nobody's going to want to look at a deteriorated panel when that happens. So we're going to have to create a bylaw that prohibits the panels from being there after the twenty years. Whether you take some kind of a, a bond, performance bond, or whatever the case may be, needs to be done. And even on the residential sections, there's, there's residential houses right now that have, that have solar, hot water solar, and the panels are all deteriorated, and they don't look good, and it devalues the next neighbor's property, so. You're lucky. There's some that are really, really in rough shape. Sure, Chris? That was, I checked on that with the couple of the, uh, Western Mash election, they told me. They're what, Chris?
There are forty-year-old solar PV panels producing at ninety-two percent today.
Okay. I checked on that, and they told me the new panels were only lasting twenty years. I was concerned over that. Regardless of what it is, there's got to be a bylaw that protects the town, okay? So the, if your neighbor's panels are no good after a certain period of years, they need to be removed. That's the issue. Okay? Doesn't matter if it's ten years, twenty years, or fifty years. After that, they need to be removed. Otherwise, it's going to devalue the neighbor's property and, and your own property, so. Yeah, Bob?
When it goes in, they have to, they have to, you know, you could, that could be, if they, if they walk on the project, you could, you have some plantification. On the other issue, you're starting to get into some slippery water. I mean, speaking of water, I, there's some neighbors on our road that have some swimming pools that are more of an eyesore than any, a solar panels on the roof for cars that are sitting in the lawn. You know, we're going to get into a situation where people are going to be like, you know, I don't really like the way you painted the side of your house, so I'm going to go, you know.
Well, I know, I know on, on a number of houses I'm seeing right now, they fill the roofs with solar panels. The roofs are full, okay? So when they do deteriorate and they're, they're gone, and if you live next door to it. Same thing. Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Is there more?
No, that's it.
That's it? Okay, very good. Chris, about your table?
All right. We kind of, uh, we kind of looked at areas in town that we saw might want to smooth out some of the zoning.
Can you move the mic closer?
I'm sorry. All right. So we're looking at, and I don't mean to, so we're all spread out here. So we kind of looked at, our first approach was to look at areas that we thought weren't properly zoned, um, or needed to be rethought. Let's put it that way. We'll keep it at rethought. Well, we'll start over here on the outlying residential. And thi- this area here, the water protection zone and so on, and with the new water system coming down Rocks Road, we felt that the conservation issues here, you know, are important. A lot of people hike up there. There's hiking trails up in here that the open space people could talk about. So we thought perhaps expanding the conservation down along Rocks Road so that as that road is being worked on and so on, that that might be something that we want to think about as well. Because, you know, with an improved water and improved road, there might be stresses to do development up through there. And again, because this is also in line with the, uh, the well and the aquifer that runs in back of these houses here as well. Okay. Then up in here, again, what Eddie talked about on the light industrial, we just felt that, especially on that side of the road that has the residential strip, that perhaps, at least where the, between the houses, Jonathan Bardwell's and up, that that be filled in with light industrial. We're not sure what's going up, going on up here on, on Straits Road. If that, what was a junkyard is still going on. If it is, fine. We also thought that perhaps going over to Main Street, the, uh, what used to be the airport should probably be filled out as an ag zone. Because it's being used agriculturally, and Simorowsky's used it for that. And perhaps expand some of that ag, ag zone over to that side of the road. This, uh, it's hard to see, but there's a, it looks like a landlocked piece that's owned business behind what looks like Brian Nicholas's house on Main Street. And we, we don't know why. You're not talking over streets? I'm not. I'm talking the other side? No, no, no. I'm talking about the landlocked piece behind Brian Nicholas's. Oh, that was part of it? Okay, okay.
It may be that that's part of Brian Nicholas's lot, and the front got zoned residential, and the back remained business. It is land, the zone is landlocked. The land is not landlocked.
I mean, it's not a big deal, but we just thought it was odd. It was just odd that it was sitting there.
No, that was next door. Or up the street.
And then this one here was the old street.
Right, right, right. But what's this?
This here.
It's not connected with us.
It isn't connected with that.
Well, I think it is.
It's just sitting out there.
I think it's one parcel.
You know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I see it right here. I think it's one parcel.
Know what that is?
I think that's two hundred feet right there. The residential zone is two hundred feet. No, I think it's tied in with this one. Yeah, that's the lot line, the big parcel.
Well, it should probably be zone one.
It should, because the business can't be utilized, because you can't get there.
Right.
The zone is landlocked, not the land.
Thank you. Okay. Then we come down Main Street, um, and we get down near where the sewer plant is. And this is all zoned, uh, like, no, industrial. And we were a little confused about that. Maybe it should go to business or agricultural or be split up. We know that where there was some interest about five years ago, putting a Betty Ford there or something like that, okay. But, you know, there was actually somebody who approached the town. What? I know, I know, but it was just a question, you know? It's, it's being used agriculturally, yeah. Then coming down, we thought that, uh, since Swazowski's, uh, packaging operation is used for town center business, it probably should be identified that way. Right there? Yeah. Well, it just seemed appropriate. Okay. Another thought that came up was, uh, the, um, the old center school. Maybe rezoning that as town center business might give that more options for the town as well. Then we thought also, as we're going further down, that South Street and Valley Street is being used residentially, and that those areas should be identified as residential use. I'm sorry. Going down south, halfway down South Street and, and part of the way down Valley Street, that that, you know, perhaps should be rightfully identified as residential use? Correct. Zone agricultural and should be identified as town center. But the houses are there? I mean, okay. Are you going to plant something on them? I don't know. Okay. Or take them out? I don't know. Up the Stella Tobaccos, for instance, on South Street. Okay. Then we're, uh, as we're going down Maple, uh, uh, one Elm Street, you have this strip there that is, uh, zone business. And it, it appears that that is being used for, um, housing. There's a four-family unit there, and, uh, the house there has been brought, is there, is there a reason to keep that business zoned? No, no, no. No, you're after the bridge. Right, across from the Legion. Yeah, yeah. And Tom Hart put the housing in there? I don't know. I mean, it's, it doesn't seem like it'll ever be used for business. I understand. Okay, but is that still the situation?
Out of his house and the barn.
No, I understand. I'm just saying, now that it's being used for housing and such, you know, just clean up, clean up. That's what we're looking at. Let's see. Uh, that's pretty much it. We, I think it was just basically how we were looking at it. I don't see any of the other issues, um, that we saw right away. So I think that covers it, more or less.
Did a good job? Good job. Thanks, Chris. Okay. How about you folks?
Okay. Basically, what we did is, um, we looked at various, um, resident, uh, zoned areas and. Sure. What we basically did is we pretty much looked at the existing, um, zone areas and indicated what our ideas was on the table over there. This part here, the, um, outlying residential, we just felt that that should just stay the way it is. That's our watershed up in here, and I think it was brought up with that table over there to remain the way it is. There was quite a bit of discussion on the Route five area, this area right in here. We actually had a little disagreement at our table on two different sides. Couple of us were interested in making this all basically light industrial, this part here, because of the, um, potential of a sewer, um, line going in. Part of the other table wanted to have various pockets of different areas. So for instance, as it stands now, and that was, I guess, originally the master plan's idea was where, um, pockets of, um, light industrial and then residential. So there's a little bit of disagreement there. As far as this area right down here, um, everybody was pretty much in agreement to keep it the way it is as far as, um, agricultural, preserving it that way. We did look at this area over here. Again, question came up why this was industrial and the, basically the, um, on our table, we felt that it should really be rezoned back to agricultural, because it, I guess it is now being utilized as agricultural land. Okay, so that was our suggestion. This area around here, um, again, we felt that that should just stay the way it is, agricultural. So basically, all the green areas, we felt that they were fine as they are. One of the things though, um, was brought up at our table was, um, having some type of design review standards, and if any, kind of in a cluster development, which we don't really have too many cluster developments. But a couple of people are interested in somehow indicating having design review standards, whereas not necessarily having historical district, because some of Hatfield is naturally historic. But some kind of standards and with the planning commission, we're not exactly too sure how to regulate that, but that was an interest in.
Pretty much residential projects, or were you talking any kind of large projects?
Well, I think a couple of things. One of which was, um, on that Route five area, the one thing you forgot is something that would enhance design there would be a tree-lined Route five. It'd be really great for heat purposes, but it's also would help make an industrial, area or light industrial area, something that would look quite good just with trees going down that, that road. And then, um, uh, I mean, I was the one who brought up this project on Elm Street that went up, and I think it looks, you know, it looks pretty much like barracks to me. And I think it could have been with some design standards, if it's possible, with just some, um, slight changes in how the houses are situated. It could be much more interesting without it being more expensive. So how do you, for those kinds of developments, what would you call them? You know, townhouse projects or? That, is there a way to build in some kind of design standard so that you get more, something that's a little bit more interesting? That, that's the kind of thing we're talking about. And then, oh, the other thing, well, you go ahead.
And the porous parking lots, you had mentioned? Yeah. There's also an indication on, um, there's a new way of putting in like more or less a porous parking lot instead of asphalt. So somehow that could be implemented as far as, um, some of these developments, whether it be a condition as far as, um, porous parking lots. That was an indication. So basically overall, in those areas there, just pretty much have some type of a standard, basically going in for the, you know, in fact, there were cluster developments. Anything else that I didn't cover or? Anything else that I didn't cover or? Okay, how's that?
Very good.
All right.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to thank you all for coming. Oh, right.
Relax, because we got about seven hundred suggestions here. No, sorry. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Um, we pretty much went down the list that was given, um, for master plan items and we use that as a basis here. The first thing that we came up with was, it's already been talked about, is to match the infrastructure with the commercial zoning. So we've got red, red, commercial and, uh, light industrial and industrial and no water and sewer to a lot, a good part of that. So, I mean, I think that that's pretty much, um, been already mentioned. I think the, the rezoning of Route Five from top to bottom has been gone over already, uh, just this past fall. I think if anybody was at those hearings, they will know it was a resounding no. And if you want to try it again, I think it's at your own risk. So I think leaving the, leaving the parcels as they're zoned and try to bring, um, infrastructure to it, I think would be the first step to try to do. Number two, protect our natural resources along with development. So have a balanced approach where as we're bringing, as we're encouraging commercial development, we're also encouraging protection of our natural resources like farmland and streams and forest land, uh, and other things. So we can hopefully have bylaws that work together so that when development comes, uh, there's also an incentive to preserve, uh, what Hatfield has best of. Number three, sprawl was indicated as being a problem. So we've got oversized zoning, um, we've got large lot sizes, one, one and a half acre primarily with two hundred foot frontage. We have a zoning bylaw now, which is called an open space bylaw, which allows you to cluster things together, uh, cluster housing together and put aside, um, a portion of it for open space. That really has not been implemented very much and I, I don't think there's been much demand at, uh, for development of that kind. But we need, when the time comes, when I think, uh, development pressure comes, we should be able to promote that bylaw. And therefore, that's one way of having development and setting aside open space at the same time. And maybe expand that bylaw to multifamily housing. Right now, it's only for single-family housing, so we should expand that bylaw to multifamily housing. Number four, afford to, make Hatfield affordable for seniors and young families. So, um, how are you going to do that? One idea was to adopt the accessory apartment bylaw, which would allow somebody, uh, a homeowner, for instance, to, already in Hatfield, you can convert your single-family house to a, a, a two-family house. Uh, you can do that with, I, I guess, with a special permit from the planning board. Uh, maybe we should consider also having an accessory structure so that a homeowner can build an accessory structure and rent it out. In Northampton, they have a bylaw like this. They allow a one thousand foot or nine hundred square foot accessory-like, uh, little guest house. Uh, it's got its own kitchen in it, but the, the landowner has to live on the premises and he can rent out, he or she can rent out that, that, uh, that other unit. And that would allow people to have another income stream, for elderly people to have an income stream, uh, and maybe encourage younger families to move into Hatfield. Number five, we just have this general encourage farming and encourage farmers. And I think the ag committee has probably, uh, really addressed that, uh, quite well, but we have to continue that. And one idea that's come up could be a local APR, a local agricultural preservation restriction program, which would, uh, encourage the preservation of farmland on small parcels because Hatfield has a lot of small farming parcels, uh, less than five acres. And the state, uh, encourages, uh, preservation of farmland above five acres, more than five acres. So maybe we can do that as a local, a local bylaw. Number six, town center commercial development, for instance, uh, along Depot Ro- around Depot Road and Route Five. So having something like a town center zone, like these pink spots here up there at, uh, Depot Road and Route Five. Maybe creating another little town center up there and try to encouraging small businesses, not, not big box businesses. When, we talked about Swazowski's and, and their, I'm not sure that that's a town center type of business. I mean, it is in the town center, but I don't think that's the town center type of business that we would encourage in a small, in a small town center. Number seven, encourage flood, flood plain, flood plain preservation. Just discourage development on that. I mean, it's already, uh, kind of naturally being discouraged because nobody wants to build and then have their place flooded out. But, um, there are, there are tempting places in, uh, in Hatfield that do not flood very often, um, that are very tempting for, uh, housing development. And maybe we should find a way to discourage that, uh, because it's prime farmland. And number eight, encourage, encourage buffer zones between, uh, development and wetlands. I know we have a wetland, uh, law, a state wetland law, and we have a conservation commission, but I think maybe having a local bylaw that really encourages the preservation of, of land around rivers and streams, uh, and lakes and ponds would be, uh, a good thing.
Would that be helpful to have the overlays?
Correct.
To show where the wetlands are?
Okay, what you were suggesting is that the overlay zoning district should be shown on the zoning map?
Yes.
Okay, so you can see where the environmental constraints really are. Good point. Want to do something, Cory?
No, I, I'm just the information officer here.
Very good. Okay, just, uh, just to recap from the land use issues from two thousand and one. Uh, number one, rural character is threatened. Does that continue? Yes. Correct. But is that, is it a concern? Yes.
Concern, yes.
Okay, very good. Uh, increased negative impacts of development, traffic, local capacity, loss of open space? Does that continue to be a concern?
Yes.
Concern, yes.
Yes. Uh, scattered development patterns? I think that kind of came up. Uh, antiquated land use regulations?
Other than the ones you say choice of.
Okay, so, but the planning board has done, uh, the town has done, taken steps, uh, to, to, uh, implement a number of changes, uh, since two thousand and one. Uh, there are still some to go and there are some being proposed tonight also. Lack of coordinated infrastructure planning. Is there a sewer master plan?
We do have, uh, a plan that shows all the new, uh, projected, uh, water, uh, lines and stuff like that in the town that need to be repaired and replaced.
Okay, so, so there's a waterline master plan?
There's a waterline master plan and sewer is still.
Now, is that plan a maintenance plan? Or is it a plan that shows projections for where the system's going to be extended to?
There's no extension, it's all repair.
Okay.
No wish list.
Replacement. No, it's a ten-year maintenance.
Okay, so it's a maintenance plan, very good. And is there one for the sewer also?
Yes.
Okay, but there is not one that talks about the expansions of the systems?
That's correct.
Okay. Very good. Yes, got you. Uh, number six, was that much of the industrial commercial zones have environment, environment, environmental constraints? I think that's been pointed out by a number of the tables. And that there were limited housing opportunities. And I think that was raised by also a couple of the tables. Well, this is terrific. What I'll be doing now is going back and trying to take these comments and consolidate them, including the, uh, change in the statistical data, and present to the planning board a draft, uh, hopefully early December, uh, of, uh, an updated section for the, uh, land use section for the master plan. And Bob, do you like to say something?
Is there going to be a for comment period?
Unfortunately, I have to have it done, it has to be done by the end of the calendar year.
But that's just your deliverable to the planning.
Oh, correct.
Planning board.
Oh, you know, that's a good point. The planning board.
Well, I, I was just thinking, maybe we could put it on the website or something like that so that everybody could.
And others who are.
And I don't do that. I don't know who runs the website, but it seems to me that's the most effective way to get it out to people.
Well, that's a good idea. We can, we can put it up, post it on the town website and you'll be getting it in a, uh, for probably, well, we'll be getting it in a digitalized version that you can make changes or corrections to, uh, if you do need to.
And then, and then put it on our agenda a few weeks later so that, uh, you know, if folks do have concerns, they could come in and talk to us about it.
And maybe some copies could be put at the town hall for, you know, people.
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah, that's, yeah, we'd do that anyway.
So, so the idea is that even though we're under a time, I'm under a time constraint. Uh, when we do get the draft to the planning board, they will post it on the website. They will have copies available at various locations for it. They will accept continued, uh, comments on it and the board will have the ability to make adjustments to us if they, so, if they see fit.
Right.
I was just looking at the old master plan. There's, there's like seven sections and each of the sections has a recommendation section to it.
Correct.
So the growth and development section was just one. I mean, there were, and I think some, a lot of our suggestions didn't.
There's farming, there's economic development, there's environment, yeah, there are many, there are many other sections to the, to the master plan.
Are you, so are you going to address any of those others?
Well, uh, right now, we're just doing the land use section.
So that's growth and development?
Growth and development, correct.
So anything that happens to deal with natural resources or anything else is just going to be?
I will prob, for the comment you made, I'll probably incorporate it, but we're not going back into those specific sections.
Yeah, time and budget.
Yeah, the scope, the scope from the funding was rather narrow, narrow, and it was directed only towards the land use section.
I want to thank you all for coming. I'm pleased to see the turnout and this is the best way for us to gather information and listen to you folks, uh, so that we get, uh, the will of the people put together.
And if you haven't signed in, there are three signup sheets, sign-in sheets over there on the, the, the counter of the library. And if you just make sure you sign up, uh, I'd really appreciate it so we can keep track of who was here. And if you need to do some follow-up, uh, we'll be able to do that also.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Can I also ask you, if you have the little?